So Max, welcome. And thank you for always keeping us updated. So I'm going to turn it over to Max, who has some updates about the school and some news for us all. Take it away.
Great, thank you very much Barbara. Good afternoon, good evening, members of the PTA. Ms. Johnson, thank you for joining us. And so I do have some updates. Just so that folks know, we have made it a habit to run these kind of town halls every summer and really through the beginning and through the school year, because we want to make sure that folks have information. Whatever we know, we want you to know as well. There's going to be tons of questions, I'm sure, about big picture things, like how this fall looks. But let me start off with just a little update about how summer is going. For those new members of our PTA that are joining us, we do run a summer school program. We also run several different summer school initiatives that are extracurricular beyond students recovering their grades. So overall, we had a about 300 students who needed to resolve NXs. And NX means that it was a course in progress that they needed to pass. And there were some missing tasks or units to be completed. So of those 300 students, approximately 250 have resolved virtually everything that they needed to, with the last few finishing up, we hope, over the course of the next 24 hours, because the last day of summer school is tomorrow. That number, just so that everybody knows, is kind of a record for the school. And it's because how we changed our summer school model. We really focused on specifically the skills and tasks that our students needed to complete to demonstrate competency, and in some cases mastery of the content. And as soon as they were finished with it, they were able to move on to other courses, other sections if they needed to. But no matter what, we were there to support them with teachers in every subject area. And it worked out in two different sessions over the summer. The vast majority of our students were able to complete their work remotely, but we also had an in-person option as well. Those students were seated distance from each other. And just like this fall are moving into a three-foot-distance transition. So for the last, let's see, I guess, six months before we broke into our summer session, we were really planning for six-feet distance. But as we know, that has changed to three-feet of distance between students going into this fall. And we'll talk about and speculate a little bit on what that might mean. In addition to our summer school program, we've also been running a summer film and marketing intensive with our partners at Warner Media and HBO. We're incredibly fortunate, just yesterday, I know I should be having, I should be giving you a presentation, a lot of visuals, some bells and whistles. I'm going to save a lot of that for September, when we have a lot of this memorialized. But I'd recommend in the meantime, check out our Instagram account, Art and Design NYC, which actually has some really, really exceptional video that was just cut from our students' visit to the House of B'Chata, which is an experiential marketing exhibit put together by HBO. I'm going to slow down my cadence a little bit, because I know I'm rushing. I'm excited. Our summer intensive actually featured 50 of our students, 25 recent graduates, and 25 rising seniors, juniors, and some sophomores, who are working on four distinct marketing pitches to the executives at HBO with mentors from the organization, to the filmmakers and producers themselves. It's really an exceptional opportunity. And our school's chancellor, Misha Porter, actually caught wind of this, along with our Office of CTE. And she visited our school yesterday. It's a rare joy to have the chancellor of schools present to share in what our students are doing. The long and the short of it is she was very, very impressed, because our young professionals put together quite an impressive series of presentations. Were able to clearly and articulately demonstrate each and every level of the marketing process, budgeting, design conception, and iteration, and really pushed her thinking on what I think students can do at the high school level. Again, they didn't call themselves students. They called themselves professionals during the visit. And I think that made all the difference, too. So that was just fun to see. And if you follow the chancellor on Twitter, you'll see that she posted up about us as well. If you happen to see AM New York, there's going to be an article coming out about that visit as well. So again, that's some good press. Beyond that point, a big update for summer for all students, all faculty, is that we are going to be taking our Art and Design HS accounts, and we're going to be migrating them to a central server. So I've been trying to stall this for as long as humanly possible, but I can stall no longer. The central folks at DOE have said that eventually all schools had to migrate their Google Suite of services, email, and drives to a central server, which means that you are going to need to have to, and your young professional will need to access their NYC SA. I may have gotten that acronym wrong, but it's basically their OSIS number-based account. And Ms. Johnson, please correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct, sir.
Hey. It doesn't mean that anything is being lost. Actually, all information in the emails and in the drives is going to be transferred to that DOE central account. So students don't have to do anything but know how to get onto NYC SA. And Ms. Johnson is going to send out that additional login information to all students and families. That guide will also be hosted on our school's website. And we'll make sure that we send out via Kinvo once the school year begins as well, okay? It's both a text-based thing you can follow, and also a little video that'll give you prompts. The key thing to know is that you need your young professional's OSIS number, their student ID number, in order to access the account. Okay. And it's going to cause any number of headaches on the faculty side. Everyone thinks they're going to lose all their stuff. They're not. Again, it's all going to be transferred. It's all good. But we're here to guide the process. And that's going to be taking place next week. A week when there's no one in the building. There's no summer classes to be had. And so we're going to go offline for about two days, starting on Monday, the 23rd. And we'll put in announcements before that date to everybody, just so that there's no shock and surprises there. Okay. I see there's some questions popping up in the chat. We'll try to get to questions as quickly as possible. But I do want to get through a couple other items here. I want to talk a little bit about, first off, my own philosophy. I personally believe that everybody, if possible, should get vaccinated. I'm saying that now. I'm not a medical or healthcare professional, but looking at the trends that we've been observing around New York City, I think the responsible thing to do is to be vaccinated, inoculated against coronavirus. Right now, the city has determined that in the fall, we're returning for in-person instruction. And that if faculty are not going to get vaccinated, they'll be tested weekly. I'm advocating for our young professionals who are of age, which all are at the high school level, and for our faculty that they too get vaccinated. And with that said, there are certain things that the DOE has been pretty clear about, I think now for the last month. For the first of which is that there's not going to be any remote instruction in the classic sense, and there's not going to be hybrid instruction like what we saw in the spring. That's what the DOE tells me. And when the chancellor was visiting my office just the other day, that's what she told me. So, you know, I heard it from the top, that that's the game plan right now. And so that means that, at least at the moment, everyone will be in the school in person. And that is what we're planning for. That's what we're programming for. It's really important for us to make sure that we do so responsibly, that we do so with safety first and safety in mind. And it's for that exact same reason that I'm, again, advocating that folks get vaccinated. If not for yourself, then for others who may be immunocompromised or in a state where a vaccine might save somebody else's life. I ask everyone to think as selflessly as possible. I can't speak to what's happening with home instruction. If folks refuse to attend school for any particular reason, but I'm sure the Office of Home Instruction is going to be getting a lot of new requests going into this fall. We're not that office, so we can't tell you. But what I can tell you is that we have a large number of new faculty who have joined the, joined our happy family at Art and Design, and partially because we expanded the range of electives that we're offering for this next year. As we mentioned, we're opening up financial planning classes. We're opening up small business management classes. We're opening up world building as a class. Hint, that's, that one's mine. And we're focusing on increasing the range of options for our young professionals, so that they have more pathways to post-secondary opportunities. We're also increasing the range of mentorships, internships, expanding our work-based learning program, and partnering each one of our major areas with at least one specific partner organization who can help forward college and scholarship access. Right now, I'm having a conversation with Target about using, about partnering with our fashion program. And we are exploring relationships with a few other folks related to cartooning, because we have our booth coming up at Comic-Con almost as soon as the school year begins. And we want to make sure that we're locked in with some big names in cartooning and animation. So those are at the forefront of our work there. We, many of you have asked about a bridge program, right? And what's happening with the bridge program? So here's the long and the short of it. For all of our new students, ninth grade specifically, you're going to be coming in.
You're the last one up.
And I should, I should clarify that the Ms. Johnson, as well as, I believe, AP Michelle Daley, have sent out a Google form that has the option to select for entry to the bridge program. Right now, I think we're just at about 235 young professionals are registered for the program that takes place from August 30th through September 3rd. To go over it very quickly, the model is on the 30th. Our ninth graders are going to be picking up their art kits and their backpacks. We are providing backpacks and Chromebooks and a bevy of supplies. We are going ape with supplies this fall, let me tell you. And then the other thing is that, that those supplies are kind of critical and necessary for the work that's happening on day two. So day two is going to be an ELA and humanities-focused day. It's going to take place fully remotely. But then on day three, which is September 1st, students are going to be coming back for a math diagnostic exam. And then on day four, and Ms. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure I get my dates right. I think it's pick-up-your-stuff, ELA diagnostic, math diagnostic. Then on day four, we're going to come back to the school again. We're going to be with Elevate Education. Elevate is an organization focused on executive functioning, study skills, and personal and time management skills. And then on day five, it's going to be all about art. And all of our young professionals are going to be working in a range of different stations that are being organized by our AP of the Arts Kevin Lopez. We're really, really excited, because the bridge program's a little bit more dynamic this year than it has been in the last few years. And it's also, it runs for a little bit longer than it has for the last few years, too. We wanted to make it a full week of getting to know each other. So you might be asking, well, which section? What part of the date is my young professional report? On day one, you'll see in the orientation and registration letter for the bridge program that there's actually already a preset time for your young professional to come in. For, for the ELA Bridge Day, which is day two, that's going to be sent out to all families. But again, that's going to be happening remotely, okay? Day three, you're going to receive by, not next week, but in the middle of the week after, so like the 25th of August, you're going to receive your slot for the math diagnostic, which is happening in person. Same thing for the Elevate Education in-person learning on day four, and same thing for day five. So everyone is going to have a clear plan and a schedule for when their young professional is coming in. Those final slots are going to be sent out again on the 25th, okay, of this month. So I'm giving you tons of information. For families that are new to these town halls, it always kind of happens like this. There's always a ton of information. And I know there's also a lot of questions that have come up. So I just want to reiterate my bottom line, which is health and safety first, before we can conduct our business and focus on the future of art and design. And so I'm going to be listening carefully and working closely with my administrative team and with city leadership about what changes or what adjustments we need to make. And one of the only guarantees that we got from these last 18 months is that no matter what, we have to have backup plans, and we have to be nimble in terms of our approach to what comes. I want you to know that, that that means we have to pivot to remote, to hybrid, whatever it is, we'll be ready for it. The key is that we all have access to what we need. Because the last thing that I want, as school-building leader, is for the existing inequities in our system and in our city to become greater or more apparent as a result of people not having access to the tools that they need. So that's, that's all my updates at the moment. There's a lot more stuff coming up in the fall. I know that there's going to be a ton of questions. So Barbara.
I can, I can, I put in the chat, thank you, Max, for all that amazing information. I put in the chat that this chat is being saved. So please don't feel any way if your question doesn't get answered. It's going to get forwarded to the principal, and he'll respond to you guys accordingly. Between Janine and I, we can, we can ask a few questions. Well, let's say, like, maybe five minutes of questions. And I'll start from the top. We can start from the top, but keep adding your questions in there, because like I said, it will be saved and turned over to Max and Janine, and they'll answer appropriately. So, Janine, do you want to start from the top with a few questions?
Yeah, there seems to be quite a bit of chatter about the My Schools NYSHA account, which Max had mentioned earlier in his briefing. So grades nine, grades 10 through 12 that are pre-existing at Art and Design should already have their My Schools NYSHA account activated. I actually checked today, and there's quite a few that have not. So my suggestion to you is, if you're unsure, please email me at my email address, and I'll put that in the link in the chat box, your child's last name, first name, and OSIS number. And I will look it up, and I will forward to you whatever it is that you need to get access and to activate that account. Same thing will go with students. Most students that are juniors and seniors should already be activated since two years ago. With the incoming new parents, that's ninth grade, and the small group of 10th grade, we may have to work on that. I do know that the My Schools account from your middle school, if it was a public school, should actually carry over. I've been told in the past that that's, that's what's supposed to happen. However, that doesn't always seem true. So I will have to check that and see if everything has carried over. You may have to de-link from your middle school and then link up with Art and Design, because we are now your child's current school. But I'll give out information in two weeks when I have all the details.
Thank you, Janine. Can you put your email address in the chat, please?
Oh, nobody knows.
And there's, it's on the website. There, and talking about the website, definitely a source of information for the high school and also for the PTA. Put those addresses into the chat. And there's a question about MetroCards? When students will receive MetroCards?
Okay. Usually, that's the first week of school. It is issued by the Office of Student Transportation. As soon as we get them, we, we issue them out. So chances are, it will be within the first full days of school. So for the first day back in and out, I would suggest that everybody get like a round trip or MetroCard for their child, just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, I, just to echo that sentiment, the official MetroCards we give out in English classes on the official first day of school. If I can get those MetroCards in earlier for each individual student, then I will. But it's one of those things that the Office of Student Transportation doesn't release them until a certain point.
There's a question about reaching out to the Art College List Help. I'm not really sure. Who can we reach out to for Art College List Help?
That would be the College and Career Counselor, Ms. Julis.
I will. Put that in the chat. The website has summer assignments for freshmen, film students, in addition for the Freshman Foundation drawing assignments. Why do they need to have more than the other majors? Was this an error?
So, yeah, I'll answer that question. So first off, all of our summer assignments are on our website. There's, there has been some chatter between the different majors that some students feel like they have more to do than others. The cartooning students almost had a revolution about having to complete a 10-page, compared to the graphic design students who had to do an extensive piece of research around different graphic design programs at post-secondary, while also doing a little bit of design work. And so one of, that came across my desk literally this last week. Not that I haven't vetted some of the assignments, but the, my response is simply this. We, as a school, need to ensure that we're providing cognitively and rigorously uniform work for our students in the summertime. So I'm having my AP of Art and CTE work in with all of the art teachers over the course of these next few weeks upon their return, to make sure that the expectations for summer tasks is equivalently rigorous. And recognizing that there were some differences between the challenge, and that we want to make sure that it's not overwhelming for, for one group entirely and underwhelmingly simple for others.
Thank you. Will rising sophomores be able to keep their Chromebooks from last year, so they can complete their homework projects online at home?
That's a great question. The short answer is, most of the students that are moving up in the grades actually won't benefit from having a Chromebook. As many of us know, you require certain software to be successful at Art and Design when you're focusing on your Photoshop certification exam. And so for that reason, we purchased a large number of new MacBooks that we're going to be providing to students who require them at the 10th and upper grade level. Chromebooks should all be returned. However, if there is an absolute need for one that's justified, then we have a tech department and tech coordinators who can help with the maintenance and then eventual return of that hardware. Right now, we're asking that everyone who graduated return their stuff, and everyone who did not, who does not require, excuse me, a Chromebook at the end of summer to also return their hardware to the school, so we can make sure they have the right tech.
Thank you. When will we get a list of supplies that we need to buy for the year? I can say, my daughter is a senior, and she recently got information. I don't know where she got it from, but I want to say it was on the website. She got a list of the supplies she needs. So Max, you can correct me. I don't know where she got it from.
No, that's quite all right. You know, we provided a list of recommended supplies last year and as part of our remote learning platform. So obviously, that has changed. What I'm going to have is, Ms. Johnson will send out to families within the next few days, that specific list. For our freshman students, they're going to be receiving the vast majority of basic supplies that they need in their backpacks on the 30th. So I'm going to put together a little animation for our families, specifically ninth-grade families, with everything that comes in the backpack before you actually pick it up on the 30th, so you know what you'll be getting.
There seems to be a lot of questions about setting up the accounts to get information. Those should be directed to Ms. Johnson. So I'm not going to go over those. How do senior schedules work with electives? Do they take both math and science?
Great question. So we always encourage that students take the classes needed in order to ensure that they are, one, meeting all requirements for graduation, but two, maintaining a degree of academic and cognitive rigor that's appropriate to where they are in sequence. So let's say that your young professional has already met all the requirements for graduation, even has multiple sections of math or science in years prior. Are we still going to force them to take a more advanced math or a more advanced science in their senior year? The short answer is, if they want to opt for another elective, which is typically aligned to either math, science, or art, then they can take that, as long as it fits into their schedule. We encourage it. And a big reason why we created the electives that we did is because both our young professionals and our faculty agreed collectively that we needed to have more of these options, and that they should still be aligned to the skill levels that we're seeing at more advanced math and science courses.
So there's actually a question here from, I'm assuming, one of our freshman parents. It says, "There wasn't a clear answer to summer film homework for freshmen. The Freshman Foundation summer assignments were already challenging. Why would they have more?" I think there's a miscommunication there. All freshmen only do freshman foundation and freshman art history. They do not do any of the majors at all. They have not chosen their major yet. So they just do those two art assignments.
That's correct. Even if your young professional, even if young professional was accepted in under the film program, they're only going to complete the foundations and art history summer assignments. And all students should only be working on arts assignments for summer. There are no core academic assignments for this summer specifically. Okay? So we have time for, I think, another few questions. Listen, I know there's a ton. It's all good. Here's one thing I will preface with before I answer the last couple, is that I always read over the chat. Barbara, make sure that I get it, and thank you. And I'll respond to folks individually, if not collectively, as part of the next town hall or a letter to students and families.
That would be great.
There is quite a few questions in regards to, will there be some kind of a bridge for the existing 10th graders? That's come up a couple of times.
Great question. So there's two parts to that, that question, two-part answer to that question. The first of which is that many of our incoming 10th-grade young professionals have actually never stepped foot in the building, right? And that's insane, that this is the world in which we live. But we realize that, and we just can't accept the fact that you walk in on day one, and oh, you're expected to know where everything is if you haven't really been here. So we are going to be sending out a survey to all 10th-grade young professionals and their families, asking if they're interested and at what point they'd like to come in for an orientation. So here's how we're looking at it right now. It's going to be a very busy week. Ms. Johnson knows this, I know it. But on August 31st, which again is the day that our ninth graders are going to be taking their ELA diagnostic remotely, we're going to be running school tours for 10th-grade students and their families. We are prioritizing those rising 10th graders who have not come to the building yet and who were fully remote prior. It's really important that everybody gets to see and understand the space. 10th graders are also going to be receiving that same diagnostic exam, but they're not going to be taking it with the ninth-grade counterparts. They're going to be taking it in their classes, okay? So 10th graders will be doing that reading diagnostic, as will 11th, 12th grade in ELA. As far as a broader orientation to the school, we may have to expand those school tours, depending on interest, from one day to two. So in that case, it would be August 31st and September 1st. And beyond that point, you know, it's, 10th graders will also receive a backpack with materials. And, you know, a further orientation is absolutely necessary, but that's going to really be integrated into week one for them. But as far as visiting the school, we're going to have that option open prior to the 13th of September.
So let me just backpack on that one, right? For that 10th-grade survey, and I have to say this because I'm very, very proud of the freshman class who really listened to my instructions, whereas that school tour can only handle one student and one parent. We still have to practice social distancing. There will be other faculty in the building. So I will reiterate that when we forward out that 10th-grade survey for the school tour interest. And I'm going to send, put that in the chat as well.
I just want to throw in a question. Well, it's not really a question, but it's a comment, and I love this. Where is it? I'm looking for it. Oh, my gosh, they're coming in so fast.
Okay. So while you're looking for that, anybody that's not able to pick up their materials on August 30th, you're going to have to just shoot me an email. There'll be an additional time to pick it up, or they can wait till the first days of school. But I wouldn't exactly do that. First day of school is going to be busy as it is.
So. So I think we could probably wrap it up. There are a lot of questions in the chat. But this comment is, "We are so excited for our daughter to be joining A&amp;D High School." She says she can't wait for summer to end so she can start school at Art and Design, hoping for a safe, positive fall. And, and that's, and I can echo this. That's what we're all hoping for. They haven't officially said the pandemic is over. We're still in a pandemic, I guess. So the best that we can do is continue to just remain positive. So the best that we can do is uh, continue to just remain positive. Um, stay informed with all the information that we're sending out. And um, I love that comment. Um, we're excited too. We're all excited. The PTA, executive board, I'm sure. Um, uh, the students are all excited. Um, but the one message that I just want to, I always stress is that, you know, things are subject to change every day, right? Um, we haven't gotten to that normal and maybe we'll never get back to that, what we called normal. But um, just maintaining um, some positive energy. Again, staying up to date on the information that we're sending out. I know sometimes it gets overwhelming. Um, but I, I think that's our safest bet on what's going to happen next. So I don't know if you want, have time for more calls, uh, more calls.
One question which I think is really important. Um, Mr. Resigura, school schedules will be available by?
That's a, that's a good question. That's, that's exactly what I was going to respond to next. I was looking through the questions myself. So student schedules are more or less set to go. I think we were, what we've been doing over the course of the last few days is just finalizing and making sure that we have all the appropriate faculty members lined up with the right classes. Um, so as I understand it, uh, we'll be able to populate pupil path with um, new schedules within the next two days. I'm aiming, I, I'm aiming for Friday now. Hear me out, hear me out. It's, it's going to be, that's going to be a big push because we, a lot of the changes that we had to deal with for programming um, and the notifications about our new students, even receiving as many as 35 new students from the Office of Enrollment didn't take place until earlier this week. And folks, just to be, I'm being transparent right now, when we have a set number of students and we're, we're ready to go. For example, our register at the moment is 1,582 students, which is like kind of a record, but also puts us way past capacity. It, it's a cause of concern because we need to make sure that we can actually fit everyone in the building. The second part of that is many of the families who were originally um, had pending offers. Those pending offers, we weren't notified that they had gone from pending to approved until earlier this week. We do on, on average, a maximum, there has to be a maximum of 34 students per class, right? We were given 35 new students at the beginning of this week, which is basically a new section of each class at a certain grade level. And so we had a cute programming album on our hands and it was, do we hire more teachers? How do we program for these students? And that's the reason why programs were not yet finalized because classes were suddenly oversized and I had additional sections of everything. Um, but we've managed to work through it. We've hired additional teachers. We're now up to close to 103, I think. Up from uh, just under 100 last year and we're, you know, we're covering it. So again, it's a very long way of saying that we're aiming for Friday to roll over our program. Um, there may be a slight delay on that, but if there is, then I'm going to personally message the entire school community and let you know when we will be expecting it. I, I did, it'll be done before the end of this month because it has to be. Okay? And that'll still give you 13 days before the beginning of the school year respectively to, you know, to adjust or ask questions or reach out to your guidance counselors.
So can I safely say the first week in September to cover everybody?
Again, I, again, I want these programs out by the end of the month and that's what I'm going to be pushing for. And I know that's not going to be great for my programming team, but they're going to be, they're going to be working on it to make sure that we're good to go. I know that folks want things done earlier and, and you know, I get it, I get it.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, let me see.
So there's a confusion about the math diagnostics. Yes, initially for the summer bridge, I'm sorry, I, we keep going back to this because that's, that is actually our largest group right now that we're um, trying to orient. Initially, the diagnostics for ELA and math were both remote. However, the math was changed to be in person. So there will be set appointments made for those students to come in for their math diagnostics on that Wednesday.
Yeah, I have time for one more question, Barbara, and then unfortunately I have to get going, but I'm looking at a lot of the questions popping in. I know I'm going to
Yeah. Okay, um.
Oh, somebody said they're so excited.
Yes, I'm loving those excited comments. I'm so excited your kids are excited. I'm excited that they're excited. Um, trying to see their schedule be available at the end of the month. Do you have any teachers? Do any of the teachers have any donors choose or items needed? Um, I haven't seen any yet. Uh, as you know, we do fund a lot of the requests that, that the faculty presents to us. Um, I don't, I haven't seen any yet, but hopefully we'll get some.
Yeah, they, they, they're on, they're on break right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And like Max mentioned, we'll have, you know, for our first um, official general PTA meeting in September. Like Max mentioned, there'll be more information and PowerPoints and all that kind of fun stuff. And we'll have more information as a executive board to share with everyone.
And, and just a quick note, um, I'm going to be writing this privately to a few folks and just saying it aloud to everybody. Uh, guidance is forthcoming and that's something we got used to hearing a lot last year. And unfortunately, it, it's kind of part of our world right now where folks are asking, well, is it going to be six feet or three feet? Right now, it's going to be three feet. You know, are masks mandated or not mandated? Right now, they're mandated. Are, you know, who, what's going to happen if someone is sick? Well, right now, uh, there's a very complex system of class closures, right? And eventually school closures if multiple people uh, test positive. Is that going to change for fall? I'm going to keep everybody notified if there's any change in guidance. And as part of our outreach to all uh, families, we're going to make sure that everyone's on the same page about what protocols are followed if there are positive cases in our school, which I'm hoping there will not be because we'll be practicing the appropriate distancing and safety measures. And again, advocating if possible and if you can to get vaccinated.
Um, absolutely. Okay, so um, like I said, we'll save the, the chat is being saved. Someone asked about uh, meeting minutes, the uh, the, the meeting is being recorded, which we'll share in the next couple of days on our YouTube PTA channel. And Ms. Johnson will also share the link with people to either review or, you know, for those who didn't make it from the beginning. Uh, Max, as always, you know, we just want to thank you for everything that you're doing, that the faculty is doing, that the staff is doing as far as making sure our kids have the best academic experience at art and design. And a safe one also. And just for the incoming families, I'm going to echo what Max says. He's really good at any updates, any current information. We will be having, he will ask for us to host a town hall like this one in addition to our meetings that we have every month, right? So um, that's, that will allow for everyone to have the latest and greatest news. So we appreciate you doing that and you're always welcome um, to have these meetings with us. And just thank you and everybody be safe.
Are we doing breakouts by borough?
Yeah, on that note, whoever wants to hang around, I have some breakout rooms set up that um, if you'd like to join the breakout room, you can and just mix and mingle with some other uh, parents. Let me re, I'm going to open them up and you're free to come back to the main meeting. I'll still be here. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and thank everyone for joining us tonight. Um, and let me just open them up. I'm going to open them up. You'll see them.
Thanks, Mr. Resigura.
My pleasure.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You got it. And again, I'll get back to those questions in the chat. Rest assured. Have a good night, be safe, everybody and uh, stay cool.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, can everyone see the rooms?
You'd say all, all unassigned, uh, they're going.
People going to the rooms?
Um, how do you get in the room? Can you explain?
Um, what are you seeing? Cause I think I'm seeing something different.
Unassigned.
Oh, okay.
77 people unassigned.
Okay.
On the left side, on the top, it says joint breakout room.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Thank you. My, my screen looks a little different. Thank you for that. So you can join the rooms. I'll float in and out of some of the rooms to say hi to you guys. Um, but you know, this is an opportunity for you guys to get to um, talk to other parents that are in your borough and share information and, you know, until we're in person again. So have a good time.
I'm so sorry. I don't see the list of, oh wait, here maybe.
On the side, there you go, 30 out. Okay, everybody's moving. Good. Okay, we'll see you in a little bit, folks.
I don't know if you guys, hi, I'm Junette. I have an incoming ninth grader. I don't know if you can answer a quick question for me. For the Bridges program, it's just the email that we're filling out.
I'm sorry, say that again?
For the incoming ninth graders Bridges program? I don't know if I missed the email.
Okay, so then email.
There's supposed to be a form.
Then email Ms. Johnson tomorrow morning and we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need my email address?
Um, no, I have it from the chat. I have it.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
I see the breakout room.
How do we get into the breakout room?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't know how to get into it.
Who doesn't?
There's about 20 of us not in a breakout.
Um, you should be able to, you don't see a join?
No.
No.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't either.
Okay.
Just a list.
Did you set them out by borough?
Yeah, they're by borough and there's actually people in the rooms.
Yeah, I can see it says the borough, but we can't do a select.
I know, on our screen, there's nothing at all, like.
Okay, so.
Okay, hang on. I'm going to move you, I'm going to move you then.
Allison, where do you want to go? Allison Cozak Cream, where would you like to go? What borough? Okay, Annabelle Guzman? What borough would you like to go to?
I mean Queens.
Queens? There you go. Charisse Carter, where would you like to go?
What about Jan, um, Janine Mack?
Yeah, we're in Brooklyn.
Dominic, Dominic Adenofo, where would you like to go? Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, the Bronx.
I'm, I'm going to need to be leaving, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hi Dominic.
Hi Zoe.
Eileen Rockner?